Put them on vibrate. For those of you that are going to speak under call to the public, just a reminder that you only get three minutes. The timer starts when you state your name and your address, and then you will be reminded when it's time for you to cease speaking. With that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Kathy, would you lead us in the pledge today, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kathy. The adoption of the agenda, Mr. Manager, everything good to go?
Mr. Chair's member of the board, no changes to the agenda.
Great, thank you. So Chair entertain a motion then to approve the agenda as posted and delivered?
And allow Chair to deviate?
As necessary, thank you. Right here, a second discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and our job adopt, our agenda is adopted. Call to the public, first speaker is Michael Burns. And three minutes, sir.
My name is Michael Burns, I have a horse.
What is your address, sir, of your home?
Two two four calle Raniaco, Rio Rico.
Great, thank you.
I have a horse at San, at Rancho San Caratano. I've been given a notice by the receiver. The receiver has determined it's in receiver's estate best interest to close the boarding operation no later than October 31st. According to the muster lines to an earlier voice by October 31st. Now I have here the Nogales International Notice of Trustees Sale, and it's the ranch. Public auction on December the 4th this year at the hour of 11:30 in the morning at, at the courthouse. Apparently you people have made a deal over Liz to unload this property, am I right?
Sir, we can't respond.
I understand that. You've made some secret negotiation with Liz that far done load this property. Now I, the receiver called me last night at home. He said this trustee sale is going to be canceled. Instead, they're going to broker the property through a licensed broker here in Santa Cruz I intend to file injunction with the court in Pluma County to stop this cessation of the boarding operation. And I would be doing that rather soon because of the, because of the deadline. The receiver should be here because I asked him, are you going to come to the meeting today? And he said, no. Apparently he doesn't have time to deal with this. The question I have, and you're not going to answer this, is why isn't he here? I have the complete copy here of the court order for the, the establishment of a receiver for the county, for all of Liz's properties. My question is, are these attorneys here today? You've got a high-priced firm up in Phoenix, you've got another one in Tucson, you've got Jeffrey Katz, who was the attorney for the trustee sale, he's not here. The receiver's not here. So what's going on? If I file an injunction, gentlemen, it's, a lot of this is going to come out in the court because there will be a hearing up in Tucson. Do you understand?
Thank you, sir. Three minutes are up. Carolyn Schaefer, are you on Zoom?
Yes, sir, I am.
Good morning, Carolyn, go ahead.
Good morning. Greetings, Supervisors.
Morning.
County staff and members of the public, I am Carolyn Schaefer, speaking as Mission Coordinator for Patagonia Area Resource Alliance. Yesterday, I forwarded you the executive summaries of the organizational scoping comments for the South 32 Hermosa NEPA process. The Hermosa project lies within the Madrean pine oak woodlands, one of just 36 biodiversity hotspots in the entire world. The well-being of the Patagonia Mountains and Semenita Creek watershed is tied to our economic prosperity and with public health as the source of our drinking water, clean air, and the biological wealth that drives our regional nature-based restorative economy. These, there must be oversight of the proposed industrialized mining activity and mining company accountability to the community to avoid short-sighted destruction of natural resources in pursuit of corporate profits. Our conservation organizations appreciate the July 27, 2024 joint press release from the county, the town of Patagonia, and the city of Nogales, stating that, quote, "The parties are committed to provide periodic public notices of progress and to engaging community stakeholders for review and comment when a meaningful draft of the agreement framework has been developed," end quote. We will continue to provide very important and critical information to the three governmental entities who are in these discussions. Thank you all, that's it.
Thank you, Carolyn. Beth Pearl, and then Jay Thompson, you're next. Good morning.
Good morning, how's everyone? My name's Beth Pearl, I'm a board member and chief education advisor for the Calabasas Alliance in Rio Rico. It was recently published that South 32 is set to potentially receive a DOE grant of 166 million taxpayer dollars, most of which appears to be earmarked for the development of a battery-grade manganese processing plant in southern Arizona. As we have made very clear, the Calabasas Alliance is vehemently opposed to any manganese processing in Santa Cruz County, the threat posed by such processing to our air quality, water resources, biodiversity, and public health is just too great a risk. We've spoken at length with scientists and other experts from the EPA, Harvard, ASU, the University of Arizona, all of whom have raised questions and concerns regarding the Hermosa project in general and especially any processing of battery-grade manganese. We need answers to these questions and hope they will be addressed during the study session. First, we have heard rumors that the processing will take place onsite at the mine. Is this true? If not, has South 32 chosen a location for the processing facility and is Santa Cruz County still being considered? There's concern, given the devastating news from ADWAR about the rapidly declining groundwater level in Santa Cruz County, we are down 50% in the last 30 years. The processing of manganese will further deplete this precious resource. Does South 32 plan to use water taken from the aquifer during de-watering for processing? If so, what is the anticipated additional loss of groundwater aside from the stated loss due to evaporation of discharged water? Air quality is of even greater concern if we add a processing facility into the model. The modeling presented thus far by ADQ for the air quality permit has not included a processing facility. What permitting safeguards are in place as the project changes and expands, for example, adding copper exploration, processing, et cetera? Does each change require new permitting, environmental impact studies, public comment, and NEPA scoping? Most importantly, when will the regional impact study take place? A project of this magnitude surely requires one. Biologists have declared the Sky Islands to be one of the five most biodiverse places on earth. We know the region is home to numerous endangered plants and animals, its destruction in the name of green energy is unacceptable. Ongoing studies and concerns by independent scientists and the cumulative effect of the extractive industry in the region have not been adequately addressed. Finally, we can all agree, public health must be protected. This can only be assured if we have clean air, water, and a healthy environment. The resolution passed by the UN General Assembly in July of '22 states that access to a clean, healthy, and sustainable environment is a human right for all. While we recognize we live in a world that falls far short of this goal, we must collectively make choices and decisions that leave us closer to that goal and not further away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jay, and then Chris, is it Verhoven? Okay, you're next, sir.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Jay Thompson, and I've lived in Rio Rico for over 15 years. I'm an engineer by degree, but have been involved in corporate world and alternative energy and transportation for decades. You've heard me talk before about the three-legged stool model in business. The three legs are people, product, and financials, and trust in each leg. And each, if one of those legs gets out of whack, the stool falls over. So we saw the recharging infrastructure RFP out just a few weeks ago, and with the deadline that's coming up right, right now. Also saw that there will be responses from bidders posted on the web this week on the county site, and haven't seen anything yet, don't know if you got any responses or not. So I guess the real basic questions are, do we have a plan? Do we trust the people we're dealing with? Do we trust the product or service that, that, that follows our plan? And do we trust that we're getting a fair deal? I'm a planner, so I'd work to checklist, and there are many EV checklists offered by DOE, DOT, station suppliers, all kinds of consultants. Some of us have real experience with EV vehicles and charging infrastructure. The rollout of EVs and especially infrastructure has not gone well, even with the billions of dollars dumped into it. The main issue is poor planning, people aren't buying EVs, stations don't work, cord theft, and more. So the first questions are, who are the customers? Because that tells us where the infrastructure goes. Today, 3% of cars sold are EVs, mostly in metro areas. Most rural roads are onward charging is in heavily trafficked areas, heavily trafficked roads. I see that one of the motives for us here is tourism, which makes a tough business case. Business and government are different kind of calculations. When I look at the proposed locations, it goes to a simple question, can people do something while waiting for a charge? That's a national question that has been looked at over and over again. Downtown areas where people can, can shop or, or eat, both of those works. Data shows all that, too. Other locations raise questions about safety, personal safety, and even bathrooms and getting drinks and stuff while you're waiting. Saw the, I sent the RFP to a friend that's CEO, one of the major station builders and operators, and worked with him before, and basically they've got this long list of questions that I hope we have looked at from a, from a county standpoint. But, and I did see in, in the RFP too, there where we said we want to have this at no cost to the county, well, believe me, we get what we pay for when we do this kind of stuff. And there's always problems with new stuff, there's no question, we need to get new technologies and stuff going, but it's been, that's, that's been totally lacking in the total EV rollout. So I was told a secret to success is listening to people smarter than I am. We have many of those people in our midst. The key to this issue is community engagement, which we need to have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris, and then Robin Lucky, you're next.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Convern, thanks for your time. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I live in Sonoya, 58 Apache Trail. And maybe like you too, I received a request from the ADQ to comment on the latest permit application of South 32 to construct a tailings pile, TSF-1 they call it, in the mountains on their property, to put, of course, the waste material over there. To give you an idea about what we're talking about, it is a footprint of 55 acres and total height in the end will be 243 feet. When you calculate that, oh, they already did that for us, it's about 10 million tons of material. And these are tailings, so they contain still lots of metals, about half a million ton. The pile of material will eventually, it's a couple of thousand feet now, eventually find its way to the lowest point somewhere, somehow. Gravity and water, as you have seen in the recent storm, the Helena storm, will take care of everything. It can happen in a few days, it may take a few thousand years, but it will happen. So in considering those comments, I would like you to have attention to a couple of talking points on this issue. One is the published risk, or probably not risk, for liquefaction, which is basically saturation of that mountain before it comes down. That risk number they give is not accumulative, or cumulative risk number, it's only based on what rainfall is doing and maybe what earthquakes are doing. Not in there is the risk for power outages or pump outages or something like that. So you don't get a real image of what the real risk really is. So I hope you will find that, too. Another point, I already said that, USGS calculated on the base of normal erosion here in the mountains, especially tailings. It will take about indeed a thousand years or so after the mine has closed and all the precautions disappeared before that pile is eroded down. And when you catch some perspective on that, the volume is about equal to the Lake Patagonia. So when it comes down, it will fill it up eventually, and, and still leaves a trail of slugs all the way back to the mine.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lucky, and then Ms. Barrera, you're next.
Morning, Robin.
Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about, my name is Robin Lucky, I'm president of the Calabasas Alliance, and I live at 1377 Camino Faja in Rio Rico, and I'm going to talk kind of about our water quantity and quality situation.
Can you get closer to the microphone?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I will say to you gentlemen, thank you for releasing the report, no good deed goes unpunished. First, after the release of that report, we had some hydrological experts that have been, we've been speaking with about the report, and frankly, they're shocked. One hydrogeologist stated between 1990 and 2023, groundwater and storage in the aquifer in the Santa Cruz Aquifer Management Area, AMA, has decreased from 590,000 acre-feet to 260,000 acre-feet. That's a loss of 330,000 acre-feet of water over 33 years. Easy math, water demand in the Santa Cruz AMA reduces the groundwater and storage in the aquifer by about 10,000 acre-feet per year. Arizona is in a long-term drought and groundwater in the aquifer is not being replenished. Based on that 260,000 acre-feet groundwater that's left at the end of 2023, and the current rate of water taken out of the aquifer, there'll be zero acre-feet of water in the aquifer in 2026, excuse me, in 26 years by the year 2050. This is our drinking water, end of quotes. According to the Arizona revised statutes 45-402 definition, active management area means a geographical area that has been designated as requiring active management of groundwater, or, this is interesting, or in the case of the Santa Cruz Active Management Area, active management of any water other than stored water withdrawn from a well. This is very important to note, and maybe that needs to be changed, maybe we need to be paying more attention to our wells. I do need to remind you that Patagonia Lakes has excessive amounts of mercury and heavy metals, and the theory is that it's due to, there are 300 mines in the county that need to be remediated from the U.S. Forest Service, that hasn't happened yet. Recently, a young mother who lives in the Monte Carlo neighborhood contacted me and sent me pictures of the Nogales wash and a photo of the infection she got from mosquito bite on her leg. She will not let her kids go outside due to the smell of the mosquitoes, who is responsible? This is a public health and safety issue, it's been going on way too long. I need to remind you, I live in Rio Rico, and it has the highest amount of PFRs in the state of Arizona, is in the top 10 for these toxic chemicals in our water in the entire United States as reported by the EPA. Now, now that South 32 will de-water the mountain by removing 6.4 million gallons of water a day to access manganese ore, will this water be used for the manganese processing facility or cleaned up and put into Harshaw Creek? Moreover, how will all these factors affect the newly proposed in Arizona's first urban wildlife refuge on, on our beloved Santa Cruz River? Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And then Larry, you're next, Larry Frederick. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to share my concerns and my thoughts.
State your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Amalia Barrera, and I live at 8 calle Diaz in Tubeck. Like all taxpayers in Santa Cruz County, I am dismayed and very worried about the plundering of the county's coffers. I have read about the lawsuit that this board has filed against the Arizona Auditor General, and I'm further worried about that. What that filing does is plunge the country, the county into further uncertainty. The only certainty about civil lawsuits is that they are very expensive, primarily because they can go on for a very long time, years even, and the only people who will certainly benefit are the lawyers. Unless you're paying lawyer fees out of your own pockets, this lawsuit will cause further stress on an already severely injured Santa Cruz County. We don't yet know the whole story, and I do believe there's plenty of blame to go around. But this board has filed this lawsuit as a finger of blame on the state auditor general because apparently nobody working in this building had even the tiniest clue of the massive theft that was going on. This even though the county's website clearly says the Board of Supervisors duties include setting all department budgets. It begs the question, how does a body set budgets if they don't know what's going on with the accounts? I'm further worried about the third blow that will most certainly come, and that will be the decision to raise taxes to make up for this fiasco. I respectfully request, Board of Supervisors, that you not make things worse by going forward with this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrera. Larry, and then Ms. Colbert.
Morning. Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Larry Frederick, I live at 132 Camino Mari Copa, just around the corner from Mr. Moreta, actually. And I am, have lived here in Rio Rico since 1999, matter of fact, it's been 25 years and one month since I moved here. This has been my home. I serve as an educational liaison with the Calabasas Alliance. I've raised four children here. I've taught generations of students at Lincoln Elementary School. This is my home, and I love it here. I've always been happy to call Santa Cruz County my home, I've always been proud to. I love the land, I love the people, I love the community, and my intention is to continue giving back to it. I remember in the summer of 2003, as many of you will, just four years after I moved here, we had been suffering a serious drought and wells began to dry out across Santa Cruz County. Water had to be trucked in by fire departments to farms whose wells could not be, provide water. Even wells that were drilled to depths of 600 feet could not access water. All that the people primarily in the east county could do was pray for a healthy monsoon that might replenish the groundwater. Snowmelt was almost unavailable, it was a rough time. Thank God, it happened, the water came back, they were able to get it. But that is not something that might happen in the future, it is something that has already happened. South 32 is going to be coming in, apparently. They're going to be using an enormous amount of water, that is our groundwater that they will primarily be using. Where are they going to be able to get new water to replace it? I understand they're going to be cleaning it up and putting it back, but it won't all be clean. Will we have enough water to drink? Will we have enough water for crops? Will we have enough water for livestock? Something that much of our county depends on. It is quite possible, from the hydrologist report that my colleagues have already mentioned, that we could run out of groundwater by 2050. I'll be an old man then, but I might still be alive. Certainly, our children and our grandchildren will be alive. What can we do? What can you do to ensure that we have fresh, clean drinking water and water for everything else available for our children, for our grandchildren? You men have deep roots here in Santa Cruz County, you love it as much as I do, and so I'm asking, what can you do to make sure that there will be water, not just today and tomorrow, but in the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Ms. Colbert? Good morning. Again, state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Colbert, and I live on Luna Court in Rio Rico. I feel like I'm in a totally different, well, anyway, I like to talk about the Patagonia Library. When I came to the last meeting, yeah, right? When I came to the last meeting, the budget for the Patagonia Library was almost halved. It went from 42,600, and it was changed to 25,000. Now, it must have been set at 42,600 for a specific reason. So how can it be arbitrarily changed with no explanation or reason? If the library is one of the best in the county, as was discussed at the last meeting, and doing a wonderful job, then why change the budget? Okay, that's the first thing I wanted to talk about. Okay, the second thing I wanted to talk about was chip sealing. Okay, so chip seal is used as an inexpensive way to pave dirt streets in the county. So they come by with a truck of light tar, and they lay that on the street, and then they have the chip seal, which are really, really little tiny rocks, and they put that on top of that, and it kind of seal, it seals then, and it is a step up from a rocky, dirty street. So I know there should be a concerted effort to pave the dirt streets in the county, and in fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Moreta about that, and I just saw a huge pile of chip seal at the fire station at Rubian Pendleton. Is that for just the east side of the 19 or for the whole county? If not, is there one for the west side, too? And when can we expect the chip seal paving to start? Since I live on one of the rocky dirt streets in Rio Rico, I really have a vested interest and wish that it could begin like, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else in the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom world, please raise your hand.
Yes, can I address the board?
Yeah, identify yourself, please.
My name is Marshall McGee, who has lived in the 25 years in Tubeck on South Homewood. In short comments about 32 south impacts on State Road 82, in particular north of the little red schoolhouse, a point where all front heavy, medium, and high traffic will pass 24/7, intending, intending for the city of Nogales, which is another subject. The proposed mine plan documents has all mine traffic using Fox Canyon, who intercepts with State Road 82, this extensive new road and bridge construction bar judgment, to use the shortest route to the national, to the national forest. The mine plan says 24/7 resultant traffic from the mine, that will have landmarks, that they will have large trucks, light vehicles, or a bus passing the little schoolhouse every 2.6 minutes for the next 60 years. I propose an alternative to use the mine to go south on Herschel Road, Road 49, Fox Road 49, to detain Fox Road 61, then to the schoolhouse on State Road 82, and then follow through the city of Nogales. This alternative is now being used presently by the mine for This alternative is now being used presently by the mine for all its transportation. Thus, continuing to not use Flex Canyon results in the following benefits. First, save the cost for converting Flex Canyon Road. Second, continues to establish forest service roads to avoid excessive traffic on State Road 82. Reduces heavy truck traffic on the Patagonia Highway. Eliminates the scenic inputs of the transmission line along 82 if routed through a south Harshaw to gain to State Road 82. Reduces residential interferences with, in an area with fewer residential homes. Eliminates electromagnetic corrosion on the Harshaw microbus line. Reduces interference on State Road 82 due to multiple residential crossroads and access to the Nogales and National Airport. Spent and fishing boats being towed on the, to the Patagonia State Park. Raster traffic to the Royal Clemist Building and Wildlife areas. Forests within Patagonia and guest ranches and various horse trails in the area. This alternative retains the prevalent most extant thunder kinds which will not be reduced by having large track tracks that cannot be passed on that road.
Thank you, Marshall. Your time is up.
Okay.
Anyone else on Zoom World? You see anybody? Emmanuel?
No, sir.
Okay. Good. We'll move on then to current events. Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Becker.
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Miletta.
Mr. Chair, good morning. I have a couple of items to report. First and foremost, I want to thank our citizens for our, all your input on these critical issues. And I want to go back, we, I failed to report something that, that, a great event that was organized by Santa Cruz Shining, Ray and Jesse. We cleaned up the west frontage from Yabapai Drive all the way to Pet Canyon. It was organized by Ray, Jesse, and Santa Cruz Valley 35. It was a wonderful event, and I believe the Sheriff's Department did the other side of the freeway, District 3. Thank you, Chief. You guys did an amazing job and you had a great team as well. I also had the honor to visit the Rio Rico Farmer's Market this Saturday. It was an amazing event, a lot of people there, hot, very hot. And lastly, I want to thank Santa Cruz Valley District 35 for inviting me to the Hall of Fame event. Mr. Fanning, you guys did a great job, what a classy event. Thank you for the invite. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Just quickly, for those of you that know Councilwoman Lopez, her husband's pretty sick in the hospital, so I would ask that you keep her and her family in thoughts and prayers. I talked to her yesterday, he's been there for over a month now. For those of you that don't know, they're the parents of Marco Lopez, who was mayor at one time and also ran for governor, so please keep the family in your thoughts and prayers. So thank you. That's all I have to report.
Actually, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The 100th birthday of former President Jimmy Carter.
Absolutely. Yay.
So he's right now the longest living president in the history of the United States.
Yay. Good for President Carter. Good. We'll move on then to manager.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing to report at this time.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to department reports and activities, finance, cash, investment, expenditure, and revenues report. Grandpa Chavez, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $16,112,359 with an investment amount of $15,728,348. The road fund overall balance is $4,902,298 with an investment amount of $7,754. Flood Control District Fund overall balance is $1,884,843 with an investment amount of The Jail District Fund has an overall balance of $5,208,297 with an investment amount of Total for all funds overall balance is $60,370,824 with an investment amount of $21,241,255 for an estimated end of the month balance of $11,773,396.
Great. Any questions with Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
Thank you, Modi. So, department updates, any department? I know you're on the flood control, so, all right, Alan. I see you're trying to get up. Seeing no department has come up and make a report, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn regular session and convene into the flood district. So move. Second discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are not convening the flood control district, item one. Director and project report. Alan, good morning.
Good morning. Just to say to brevity, I have provided a report for y'all to take a look at, and there are some project updates in there. The town of Patagonia and the city of Nogales do not have reports for this meeting, so that's all I have for today.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comments unless the board has any questions on Alan's report.
Alan, Ephraim Canyon?
Yes, sir. We have made some progress at Ephraim Canyon.
Can you let the, a lot of people here haven't come to a meeting before, can you tell them what the project is?
Ephraim Canyon is a retention detention basin that's going to be near the Mariposa Port of Entry, and hopefully it'll reduce some of the peak flows downstream through the city of Nogales.
Great. And this is all grant funded with, and we have to put in our share, but the vast majority is?
Yes, sir. It was grant funded to the federal government.
Great.
And the update is?
Oh, the update, okay. Yes, sir. The consultant has responded to the comments provided by the county for their draft technical memo for verification of the 2014 design concept report conclusions. The consultant, the consultant geotechnical engineering subconsultant has been on site doing soil borings and sampling as part of the continuation of Phase 1. The county has began the process of applying for the, for an EPA grant as well.
Great.
So that's where we're at now.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, so Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our flood control district, convene into the jail district.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Jail district discussion, possible action for authorization to fill two vacant detention officers' positions, are they budgeted for, Mr. Chavez?
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our jail district, reconvene regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now reconvened. A question for you, Bob. Is item three part of the executive session or is that totally different? And that's just a ratification of the tolling agreement.
Oh, Mr. Chair, let's see, both two and three inaction items are?
Part of the executive session? Okay.
They would be included.
Okay. Just wanted to, to make sure before we do anything else. So, let's go ahead and Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Any, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will go to, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn and convene into study session. We have two reports today. One is the quarterly update of the Hermosa Project by Mr. Pat Reisner, and the other is a presentation on survey results for EPA downtown study by the Santa Cruz County Port Authority. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So, Pat, it's all yours.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us for an update today to the members of the public. As I have done in past updates, I have taken notes as quickly and meticulously as I could during call to public, and as I go through the slides, I will attempt to answer all the questions or comments that have come up for those that are part of the content we're presenting, and then at the end, there's a couple of things that I think have come up that aren't part of our content, but I'll address them before we, before we close. The presentation. First slide, please. So, the first slide, I just wanted to provide a bit of an update on where the project's at from a permitting standpoint. There's a number of things in process and underway. I'll address a couple of things that came up in call to the public on this particular slide. So, the federal permitting process, or NEPA, continues to progress. I think everyone knows, we had the public scoping comment period in June, that was 30 days. Meetings in Patagonia here in Nogales, nearly 200 attendees. Forest Service received about 550 comments. That's really important. I'll talk about this process a bit more in addressing Mr. Magruder's comments that came up around roads, but part of what's going on now is the Forest Service are taking those comments on scope, developing alternatives for every part of the project that's within the scope of the NEPA process, developing their analysis around those alternatives. And the next major milestone will be publication of the draft environmental impact statement in May of next year. That, that schedule appears to be on track. I'll probably address Mr. Magruder's question now because I do think the NEPA process is an important element to the points he was making around routes and traffic. So, the Flex Canyon Road that's proposed for the primary access road is part of the scope of this analysis that the Forest Service is conducting. As part of the NEPA process, they're required to come up with a range of alternatives for everything that they're analyzing, and then that includes traffic routes. So while the Flex Canyon Road has been proposed as the primary access road, they will be looking at a number of other alternatives. We have done an alternatives study over the last few years, but at the end of the day, the Forest Service has to do their own analysis of the alternatives. I think the, the options that Mr. Magruder raised are under consideration. The only thing I will say is about the road through Duquesne, there are some technical fatal flaws, just with your ability to actually construct a road of sufficient width through there, but that does not preclude the fact that the Forest Service has to look at all of those alternatives, and I would say, to address his comments, that's a very important process. When the draft DIS comes out next May, there will be an opportunity for a longer comment period, and I think how those alternatives are addressed, how they've been analyzed, that's an opportunity for the public to have input on those issues that were raised. Moving on to the air permit, our air permit from the state for the project was issued earlier this summer. That initiated a 45-day review by the US EPA, the federal EPA. That, that 45-day period has now concluded. There were no objections to the permit. There were some minor comments provided to ADQ which were addressed. That permit authorizes both construction and commencement of operations for the activity on private lands. I'm going to get to the manganese processing facility questions that came up on the next slide, but the comment was made about the manganese processing facility not being included in that air permit, and that is primarily because we have not located that facility yet. We've not picked a location, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. The third element of permitting that's ongoing is a draft Aqua for Protection Permit Amendment. So we were issued an Aqua for Protection Permit a few years ago for the existing tailings storage facility that we constructed as part of the voluntary remediation project we did with the state of Arizona, where we spent in 2019, 2020 about $40 million building a new state-of-the-art dry stack tailings facility and cleaning up 2.2 million tons of tailings that had been disposed of or placed in the Patagonia Mountains back in the early 19th century. As part of that cleanup project, we constructed what we call TSF-1, so the tailings storage facility that exists at the site today. This is an amendment to the Aqua for Protection Permit that was granted for that facility to allow us to expand the existing facility to put production tailings in once the operation is, is underway. So one thing I do want to clarify, and I will address Mr. Workhoven's comments in this section, we aren't constructing a new tailings facility. That's not what's occurring. We're expanding the facility that's there that was constructed to clean up the historic tailings. It is a one-of-a-kind facility in the world in terms of new technology, so some of the issues that, that Mr. Workhoven raised, obviously, the concern around tailings facilities is always safety and stability first and foremost. The risks Mr. Workhoven raised around erosion, around collapse, around liquefaction. I would encourage you to go do some reading on what dry stack tailings are and what they mean, or come on a public tour so we can actually show you. The reason that facility is designed and constructed the way it is is to specifically address those risks. So if you look at tailings facilities that have had stability issues historically in the world, other parts of the world, they've been wet disposal of tailings where the moisture contains 60 or 70% water in the stack. What's different about our facility is it's dry stacked, so we take the water out of the tailings before it goes into the facility. So our tailings facility is about 10% moisture. We also compact the tailings, they're not left loose like they are in most facilities around the world. The reason we do that is if you get sufficient compaction and take enough water out of it, you can eliminate the risk of liquefaction, what Mr. Workhoven raised as a risk. And so we've presented to the regulatory agency engineering and modeling studies that show that the compaction we've actually achieved, not projected, because we have a facility we've built, it's there. If you come on a public tour, we can show it to you. But what we've actually achieved in building that facility, because of the compaction and it's being dry and not wet, it eliminates the risk of liquefaction. So that facility is designed to not be able to liquefy even in a 1 in 10,000-year earthquake. That facility is not dependent on power or power outages or pumps, as was commented on by Mr. Workhoven. We de-water the material that goes into it before it goes in, and it's designed to shed water, not store water. We have pyrimeters in the stack that measure water level, so we know we aren't getting a wet stack. We have a liner system under the tanks, the only lined tailings facility in the US. So the comment made about those metals reaching the environment, there's a bayonet clay liner and two geosynthetic liners underneath the tailings to prevent that from occurring. We also have a closure plan for that facility for an engineered cap that goes on top of it so water can't reach the facility after closure. So those risks are certainly valid things to raise, and they're actually exactly why we have built a state-of-the-art dry stack tailings facility that can't liquefy and will remain stable for, for a long period of time. This permit amendment is to revise the permit to allow that facility to be expanded. The only other thing subject to this permit is we are voluntarily, at our request, increasing the frequency of monitoring from water treatment plant two, that's the, the de-watering discharge. We have been monitoring quarterly, we're going to increase that frequency to monthly. It's an ongoing discussion we've had with ADQ. Last thing, the existing permit that's in place remains in litigation. It's pending with the State Court of Appeals. That's a lawsuit that was filed a few years ago. It is important to note that while those permits are under litigation, the existing permit remains valid, so we are operating today under a valid permit. But I think the points around tailings storage are really valid ones. There are risks that we have to be mindful of, and that's exactly why we've built the facility that we have that addresses those risks. Next slide, please. Two things, since the last update on federal funding, and I know there were some questions that came up around this that I will also try to address. Earlier this year, I believe it was in May, we were awarded a $20 million grant by the it was in May, we were awarded a $20 million grant by the U.S. Department of Defense to support the exploration decline we're developing to access the manganese ore body underground. That funding became available in 2022, when President Biden invoked what they call the Defense Production Act around the five battery metals that go into lithium-ion batteries, one of which was manganese. What the Defense Production Act is, it's an executive power the President has to stimulate domestic production or force companies to domestically produce products that are needed for national defense or national security. The reason that was invoked for the five battery metals is because we are 100% reliant on China for the supply of battery-grade manganese for lithium-ion batteries. Whether it goes into an E V or whether it goes into the many applications in national defense where lithium-ion batteries are utilized, we are 100% dependent on Chinese supply chain. So, that's how that money became available. The decline is in development. We will complete it at the end of next year. I've got a photo I can show you later. More recently, the last few weeks, the reference to the DOE announcement came up earlier. This is a grant that was made possible by the bipartisan infrastructure law that Congress passed last year that set aside funding to promote domestic processing and production of battery metals for the same reasons, national security, national economic interest. So, this is a $166 million grant. That is a 30% federal government cost share for a future commercial-scale manganese facility that will not be constructed before probably late this decade. So, it's not something that happens in the near term, and I'll talk a bit more about that here in a minute. As part of that process, there's another $22 million that we've committed to DOE. That's earmarked for supplemental additional community benefits, local procurement, workforce training, and social investment. That was part of the process. Where we're at on processing of manganese. So, I know there has been information circulating in the community, and the question was asked in Call to the Public, some notion that the DOE application that we filed suggested that this facility would be built at site or near the site. That could not be more false. If you go read the DOE application, it actually specifically says we have not picked a location for that facility. Everything we've said in the past about how we would cite that facility remains true, and everything that's in the application we made to DOE for this grant is consistent with everything we've told the county, the board, and the community for the last few years. We have not picked a location for that facility. The reason is, we committed, we would do additional engineering, so we could get a little more definition on what the facility looks like, be able to demonstrate more clearly what does and doesn't go on in the facility, be able to demonstrate more clearly the controls we will have in place for environmental and health concerns, and that we would come back to the county and stakeholders later this year, when that work was done, with that information in hand, to have a conversation about what that facility looks like, to determine if it's something that could be located somewhere in Santa Cruz County. It will not be at the mine site. It will not be close to the mine site, which is another reason it has not been included in the air quality permit application, because we don't know where it's going to be. When we do decide where it's going to be, it will be subject to another permitting process. But again, we don't know when that is and where that will be located. So, our commitment is that we would work with the stakeholders. If there is consensus that that facility shouldn't be in Santa Cruz County, we will look at other options. But we want to be able to provide more information before we have that conversation.
So, on the $22 million for local procurement, workforce training, and social investment, I know you placed me on one committee to do workforce training. We've never met. We were part of an executive committee, never had any opportunity to give any input or do that. As far as local procurement, what are you doing for local procurement? Are you working with the Chamber? Are you working with other entities that can help you identify who can provide the supplies that you need? And then, third, is social investment? And what is social investment? And how are you going to make sure that that money is put to good use to help the community?
Right. So, we have a full-time staff member in our procurement department that is dedicated to working on local procurement. So, that person's sole responsibility is to connect with local businesses in Santa Cruz County, to come up with more ways for local business to do business with us, and in the cases where there isn't a local business, to potentially engage entrepreneurs, to start a local business, to support those needs. We've been engaged with the Chamber, and there's ongoing work with the Chamber of Commerce on this. We are discussing sort of more formal arrangements around that. So, it absolutely is a partnership with the Chamber and others, as well as having a dedicated resource for us to commit to that program. We will set targets around local procurement, so how much of our spend is in Santa Cruz County, once we get into operations. And so, that program's under development. I do have a slide after this on workforce development, so I can answer your questions on that and what's happening there in a bit more detail when I get to that. Social investment, thus general community support. It could be education. It could be infrastructure. Obviously, a lot of that is going to ultimately flow through the Community Protection and Benefits Agreement that was referenced by Ms. Schaefer in the Call to the Public, that we are negotiating with the county, the town, and the city. The next steps on this, we will be constructing a small-scale test plant early next year. That will be done in a laboratory setting initially. So, I just want to make it clear, we aren't mining manganese. We aren't mining zinc. We aren't mining anything. We also aren't processing anything at site. So, I've also heard concerns that our pilot plant that we're producing the battery-grade manganese was at site. It's in a laboratory setting, not even in Arizona, with a specialist lab. So, none of this is at site, nor do we plan to construct the commercial facility at site. Last thing I just want to talk about, I've talked about the supply chain around manganese. The other thing I want to address, you know, more than 95% of the battery-grade manganese in the world comes from China. I've heard concerns that we're getting federal government support to sell the product to China. China does not need any more battery-grade manganese. They pretty much produce all of it now. The purpose of this project and the reason for these two grants is to create a domestic supply chain. So, we actually eliminate our need to source the material from China, whether it's for military applications or E Vs. Next slide, please. So, I'll try to address your questions now, Chairman. So, we have had a workforce development task force that's been working since late last calendar year, so nearly a year now. The pace of this has picked up. They've been getting together, designing our local workforce programs. I think we've stated before, we have a target that 80% of the full-time operational workforce be existing residents of Santa Cruz County. For us to do that, we have to do a lot of training. There's a few things that I think are gaining some traction and momentum. One is around facilities. So, we obviously are going to need additional infrastructure. We want to train in Santa Cruz County. We don't want to bus people to Pima J T A D or Pima Community College in Tucson. We want to do it in Santa Cruz County. And one thing that we believe should come from this project is long-term workforce development, training, infrastructure in the county. That goes beyond just our needs. So, we are in discussions with the Santa Cruz Center, the provisional college, around an M O U and how we work together, and also expressed and been clear on our interest in contributing to the construction of a new facility for the provisional college that could meet our needs as well as needs beyond South 32. So, a lot of discussion around infrastructure and a facility for the provisional college around programs. The first thing that we will need to do is train electrical and electrical instrumentation people. And so, there was a subcommittee of the workforce that is getting more to where the rubber meets the road around that. The Electrical Certification Program Committee is meeting pretty regularly. Pima Community College is involved around setting up a program at the Santa Cruz Center where we could start training, actual training, local residents in that program by the middle of next year. We don't need to do any training before the middle of next year. If you look at our operational schedule and when we need people and these skills, the operations training will happen more in 2026, as we lead up to becoming operational in 2027. We are also working with other local workforce development initiatives. So, the workforce development task force that the Chamber has that's sort of non-mining focused, the person that leads this task force for South 32 sits on that task force now, so that those groups can work together and where there are synergies and need to work together, that that happens. Next slide, please.
So...
Sorry, go back.
Just a follow-up. My concern is the following with this, Pat, not that you're not trying to do that, is that when you approach members of the community to be in committees, and then you don't follow through to get impact, and you know that I've been a hawk on trying to get workforce development down here, that we met several times, and I gave you a list of what you wanted to need, and I'm glad that you're doing it. But it's frustrating that you approached me, well, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, and I'm glad you're doing something. But in the future, please, if you're going to do something, and you're going to have people be included, include them, because it's not fair for us to think that you're doing something, or you're going to be involved in something that will have a major impact. Because I understand that in order for this community to move forward, we have to have the trained workforce. And when ideas aren't listened to, or you work around some of these issues, and I'm going on my way, I'm on my way out, and perhaps maybe that makes a difference to you or not. But until December 31st, I'm still going to be here. And I think it's important that when you ask people to, that you take them seriously, that you get their input, that you work with them, because this is all great and good, and I'm glad that you're working with the local community college to do this. But I think that we've missed a lot of other opportunities to work together and to try to even improve, especially with some of the meetings that I had with the White House personnel when it came to workforce development. So, just a caution for the future, and, you know, I think that if we're going to be viable to move forward, there's a lot of things that can be done with your assistance and with the assistance of the public to be able to move and create those job opportunities for those young people that, they graduate from high school, they don't know what they want to do, they go to college, and they never come back. So, just my two cents, and it's me, and I'm talking for me, and I can't include my colleagues, but I do find it very frustrating when things like this happen, that, you know, talk is cheap, but show that you're committed to work with people. You know, those are my two cents, and that's my commentary. So...
So, the executive committee did meet. There was a meeting. Yes, there was. We kicked it off twice, and we've been trying for about three months to get the group back together and haven't been able to get schedules coordinated.
Well, to tell you the truth, maybe it did, but I wasn't included. I didn't get an email. So, regardless of what it is, you know, there's going to be change in that. But I think it's important that if you're going to include people, that you keep that commitment and don't, you know, take it for granted that, ah, well, you know, this is Nogales, people don't care. I care. I was born in this community. I raised my children in this community, and I've been involved in this community in politics for over 30 years, and I know that there's a lot of things that can be done. And perhaps with some of the social money that you're going to bring to this community, it can be done. But that all depends on the community protection. And I know I've had some meetings with Stephanie and some of the things that I would like to see in there before we go out. And I don't know if it's going to be this board that ratifies it or not. But I think at the end of the day, it's very important that your word is your bond, just like my word is my bond to people. That's the only thing that I want you to know, Pat. So, anyway.
I agree. And I believe we've involved everybody we committed to, and those meetings have occurred. So, next slide, please.
Thank you, Pat.
One of the things we have done, the economic impact study that was done by the Ernst &amp; Young Accounting Firm a few years ago, has been updated in the last six months. Two reasons this has been updated. We actually are investing more than originally planned in terms of the capital investment in the county. The $2.2 billion investment that was announced in February had not been reflected in the previous numbers, as well as some other changes that have been made. So, this has been updated by Ernst &amp; Young. I won't go through the details, but it's largely the same story. Some of these numbers have shifted up a bit. On jobs, we, I think everyone knows, about 900 direct jobs for South 32 employees. But if you include indirect, which are supporters, vendors, suppliers, that will meet our needs, as well as induced jobs from increased disposable income in the county, it's more like 2,400 jobs. One update on that, I'll give you an example around indirect jobs. We're negotiating with the mining equipment manufacturers to buy equipment right now. One of the things we're requiring of them is they set up their service center that they will work from to service our equipment at Hermosa. It has to be in Santa Cruz County, and they have to have apprenticeship and workforce development programs in the county to train the people that will work for them to support our operation in Santa Cruz County. So, that's an example of indirect employment. They're not South 32 employees, but they will be full-time engaged in supporting Hermosa, and that's another workforce development opportunity that's not directly related with us. Each one of these jobs does generate $90,000 a year in salary plus benefits. We've provided a breakdown of the job classifications with pay to the county to support that number. To put some of the GDP economic output numbers into context, that $1.2 billion, $1.16 billion a year in new economic outputs equal to about a third of the total output of the county today. And then, we certainly have some issues to work through on the local tax side. But if you look at what the property tax generated from the project should be, it nearly doubles the current property tax revenue in the county. Next slide, please. Just a few photos of what things look like on site. The left is where we're developing the two shafts to access the zinc resource. The towers you see in the background, in the foreground, is where we're starting to do the earthworks to construct the concentrator, the facility that will convert the ore into the zinc and lead concentrate. On the right side, you see the entry into the side of the hill there. That's the decline that's under development for the manganese, the one that's co-funded by the Department of Defense, the $20 million grant. So, we have about a little over 550 people engaged in construction now. That will increase to about 1,000 people the middle of next year, and continue to grow from there as we train the full-time workforce. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the Community Protection Benefits Agreement. We have agreed with the other signatories that we would communicate progress and where we're at on that jointly, the press release that was announced earlier. We will continue to do that. I only want to put this up here because I just want to emphasize it's something that we're very committed to. It's something we feel is very important. Some of the issues and questions that the chairman had about social investment, this is where we'll get into the details on that. It's obviously going to cover both benefits and supplemental environmental protections, and we're really pleased that we're engaged in discussions with the signatories to progress that now, moving as fast as we can, but it is a lot of work. So, there will be routine updates and communications that come from all four parties on how that process is progressing. We have kicked off the new community advisory panel. We had an advisory panel for the first three years. While the project was in steady phase, that panel was contemplated to be a three-year entity. Now that we're in construction, execution, and starting to train workforce and move more closely to operational phase, we have revamped the panel in terms of membership. So, we had six members off the old panel that wanted to continue to be a part of the panel, that have carried over into the new panel, and then nine new members. We ran an open process, open applications for people to apply. We had a really good response to that. We feel like the panel is very diverse, very representative of all areas of the county, all sectors in the county, and a good mix of some institutional knowledge of members that have been on the journey for the last three years, and some new fresh thinking and fresh eyes. They met for the first time on September 4th, and that will continue to be ongoing. More recent updates on community support. So, the community foundation, Hermosa Community Foundation, we just finished another grant cycle. We have been contributing to nonprofits from the foundation for the last five years. We've now contributed to 121 different nonprofit entities in Santa Cruz County. It's more than... It's more than a million dollars now in terms of total contributions to those entities. We do those grant cycles twice a year from that community foundation. We also, I think some of you may know, the old Tree of Life Building in Patagonia on Harshaw Road, we purchased that property several years ago. We've converted it, upgraded it, and converted it to a facility for the Eastern Santa Cruz County Food Bank to use. They did not have their own facility that was fit for purpose, so we've done some renovations, and they are now set up utilizing that facility. We also run about 80 head of cattle. We have some federal grazing leases in and around the site, so we've continued to donate meat from the herd. Recently, we donated about 2,100 pounds to the food bank in the last couple of months. And then lastly, continued support for education. For the last five years, we've been supporting STEM programs in the schools, both the Techno Luchicas program, as well as the robotics program at the elementary school level. We started this investment five years ago when we, even when we weren't quite sure where the project was going. I think it's important to note why we do this. We do this because it is part of lifting up the community, no matter what kind of job you're gonna have, whether you come to work for South 32, whether you go to work for anybody else, whether you stay in Santa Cruz County or not after you get out of secondary schools. STEM skills, STEM education is really critical to be successful in today's world with the way technology is growing and advancing, and there are lots of students that are underrepresented in that field, and it's important, they need support. So, we've been supporting STEM education for five years. It's not to get them ready necessarily to come to work from us. If they do, great, because part of why we wanna employ local people is to provide opportunities for local students to come home or stay home. And so, we won't be apologetic for that. It is really important to provide those opportunities, and it starts with supporting STEM education at the elementary and middle school level, and we will continue to do that. There are no strings attached with any of this. Most, we had some recent graduates from the schools in the county that were in our first cohort of Techno Luchicas five years ago. Many of them, if not all of them, are going into STEM education careers at the university level. Many of them may not come back to workforce. That's fine. We support it to promote STEM education and create opportunities for young people, and hopefully we do create some great opportunities to utilize STEM skills to allow students to stay in the county or come home when those opportunities might not have been there in the past. So, we will continue to do that, and is a really important part of our social investment program. Next slide, please. This is the last one. One of the things that's been a key concern that has been expressed since we started developing the project is traffic. We had intended at some point, as our numbers of employees ramped up, to always shift to trying to get cars off the road and address the traffic issue. We got to the point in May of this year where we felt like we needed to do that with the increasing numbers of people on site. So, we have now gone to busing our workforce entirely to site. We don't allow people to drive their cars to site anymore. Two reasons for that. It reduces congestion on the roads. Mr. McGruder talked about State Road 82. Obviously, we wanted to reduce traffic on that road from commuting employees. Employee fatigue and safety is probably our biggest concern. We also now are requiring our contractors to bus people to site to take more vehicles off the road. It's reduced almost 8,000 car trips since May, and as our numbers ramp up, those numbers will continue to go. So, more than 8,000 cars off the road, 870,000 miles and 16,000 hours of driving. So, substantial safety improvement, both for employees and community, and certainly starts to address some of the concerns around traffic. I think that's my last slide. I did wanna address one other thing that I think came up in the comments that I haven't been able to address yet, and that's around water. So, the concerns around groundwater, I know Ms. Lucky and Mr. Frederick both commented on water use and large volumes of water. I do wanna make it clear, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding, so the groundwater management program that we're conducting to move the groundwater away from the shafts that you saw in the picture, so we can safely sink the shafts, we're not using that water. So, that is poor quality groundwater that does not naturally meet any Arizona surface or groundwater quality standard. We are pumping it out, running it through a state-of-the-art water treatment plant that achieves a water quality standard higher than what is in probably any water treatment plant standard in the state. We actually agreed with ADEQ on a higher standard than what they proposed in the draft permit when it was issued, because the plant has the technology to deliver that. So, it treats the water to higher than an Arizona surface water quality standard, and right now, 100% of that water is going back into Harshaw Creek. We've done a lot of studies, including one jointly with the town of Patagonia, where we jointly selected a consultant to show that that water goes downstream and reenters the environment. So, that is a, that's why we call it groundwater management. We're moving it from one part of the aquifer environment to the other, in the process, taking a resource that meets no water quality standards and upgrading it to better than a surface water quality standard. That water is not being pumped because we need to use it for any industrial purposes or for mining. It's to move it out of the way so our workers are safe, and that water does reenter the environment. Now, the NEPA process, we're permitting what we call rapid infiltration basins. That was at the request of the community. That came from a suggestion from the original community advisory panel on how can we keep more of the water up in the mountains rather than putting it in Harshaw Creek? So, as part of the NEPA process, we're permitting rapid infiltration basins that will allow us to take up to two-thirds of that water, put them in the rapid infiltration basin so it reinjects the aquifer in the Patagonia Mountains rather than sending it down Harshaw Creek. We can put up to two-thirds of the water in those facilities, so all of that water will either go into the rapid infiltration basins or into Harshaw Creek. We won't use it to process manganese, we won't use it to mine, we won't use it to process on-site. It's not needed for industrial purposes. I think I've said before, because we use dry stack tailings, we use about 90% less water than a traditional mine. Couple mines utilize about five gallons of water for every pound of metal they produce. We will use about .4 because of dry stack tailings. So, it is setting a new benchmark around water conservation, and the groundwater management program, not only is it upgrading the quality of the water, but it is putting it back into the environment. That's all I had. Thank you, Chairman.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
Thank you very much, Pat.
Appreciate it. Item two, presentation of study results for the EPA Downtown Revitalization Study by the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority. Morning, Josh.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning. My name's Josh Rubin. I'm the chairman of the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority. We did wanna give a presentation on the recent results of the survey that we did in conjunction with assisting the EPA on their downtown revitalization study that they're conducting. This is a study that they're conducting, we're just providing resources and information. I would like to pass it over to Luis Ramirez from Ramirez Advisors to go into the details of the study. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning, Luis.
My name is Luis Ramirez, President Ramirez Advisors. Pleasure to be here before you. Let me kinda set the framework. The Port Authority and a whole slew of additional stakeholders, including the county, the city, regional, statewide, have been pushing for the modernization of the deconscenium port of entry. U.S. Customs and Border Protection has determined, they've made the statement themselves, that the port no longer meets their mission requirements. It's an outdated facility, overwhelmed, congested, falling apart in some cases, and many of you have probably used to when it's raining and it's flooding and it's just a disaster in there. But ports to be modernized is probably a five, seven, if not a 10-year process. They're very complex federal facilities, and it's not only the security requirements, but also the physical security requirements for the employees who staff it, for the people who use it. So, it's a very complex process we have to go through, and in working with our congressional delegation, $500,000 were secured, and that's paying for the feasibility study, which is the number one step that is required for modernization of the port. Feasibility study will look at the current facility and determine how much bigger the facility needs to be in order to meet future requirements. It'll provide a conceptual design, and it'll provide a pretty close to cost estimate of what the facility would entail. That is a federal internal process. We don't get to participate in it. We provide concerns and comments to the General Services Administration, but it's there, it's a federal internal process, really the main participants are GSA and Customs themselves. Coordinated with that, we recognize that the expanded facility, which is what you see today, forget it, it's gonna be dramatically different, much bigger than in the future, but that's gonna have an impact on downtown Nogales, and it's gonna have an impact on the community. It's a regional asset. So, there is a, in working with GSA and the Environmental Protection Agency, technical assistance was provided so that EPA can manage, they've secured the services of Renaissance, it's an advisory consulting firm, to do a downtown revitalization study for Nogales. It's gonna look at not the port of entry itself, but everything outside the port of entry in downtown, everything that's gonna be impacted by the new port of entry. It can be roads, it can be pedestrian, it can be vehicular mobility, it can be the binational aspects of it. All those issues are being studied, and what we wanted to do is be more proactive. The Port Authority, great support by the county, of course, the county provided some additional funding, so that we could do a very intense outreach at the local level, stakeholder outreach. To that end, we put together a survey. Damartine will go through the results, he sees the numbers, Wizard. But the survey was, a couple of people said, hey, you guys came up with a question, sent that out. No, that's not how it happened. We came up with a draft list of questions, but that was routed to the city, the county, and almost every stakeholder, including downtown merchants, including the Morley Avenue Arts District, and a number of other stakeholders to say, what do you wanna find out in this survey? And that's how we came up, which we thought was gonna be a very long survey, and I'm gonna steal one of the punchlines from Martine, but the respondents for the survey took over 20, almost like 26 minutes per response. They literally took 26 minutes per person to do the survey. We were absolutely astonished with the response, and I don't wanna steal any more punchlines from Martine, I wanna turn it over to him, but I wanna stress one thing, that this is the beginning of the process to modernize the port of entry and the downtown revitalization process. This is a multi-year process, so if we didn't get to the question you were looking for, doesn't mean we can't do additional surveys in the future. There's an opportunity for stakeholder process and participation throughout, but understand that there are no guarantees, there's no money. It is this information that we're getting is what we're gonna use, we and the broader we, city, county, and the Port Authority. How are we gonna go after the funding? Do we improve the roads downtown? Do we need to modernize the bridges? Do we need grade separation? We clearly anticipate that pedestrian bridge that exists inside the port of entry, that's gonna go away. Well, do we provide additional, you know, grade separation for pedestrians at another location? Those are the questions we need to look at. So, without further ado, I wanna turn it over to Martine, we'll go to the next, I think it's slide six or something like that, where we need to go to?
Slide 12.
Slide 12. And then Martine will run through the findings, and then we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Mr. Wizard.
I wouldn't say I'm a wizard.
Good morning, Martine.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Whoever was your boss, they called you the Wizard, so.
Is this presentation available on the Port Authority website?
Supervisor Black, yes, the presentation was shared with the county, so it is in the agenda packet, and it's also made available on the Nogales Port Authority website. You'll see a link towards the end of the presentation. Again, for my recommendations, Martine Rodriguez, we're Ramirez Advisors, and I'm gonna walk through the specific questions and results of the survey. Could we go to the next slide, please? So, as I'm walking through, so I'll be walking through the specific questions that we asked people throughout, and something I wanna invite you to consider is what are the opportunities for the community as we're talking about the implications of a modernized port of entry in downtown Nogales? So, as Luis mentioned, we distributed a survey in a couple ways, partly by working with some of our stakeholder partners, Santa Cruz County, the state of Nogales, the Chamber, other entities, and we ran the survey for about three weeks, and we were fortunate to receive 456 total responses. About three-quarters of those responses were in English, a fourth were in Spanish, mostly from the Mexican side, in Nogales Sonora. We distributed, like I said, through our networks, through MailChimp, through social media. We also worked with the Nogales International to put a runner ad and, you know, op-ed pieces just to bring attention to this. But as Luis mentioned, this is gonna be probably one of several surveys throughout in the next couple of years, so this is to help spur an initial conversation about it. Could we go to the next slide, please? Like I said, survey collected with Microsoft Forms, and we'll just jump over to the next slide. So, the survey was split into three sections. The first section is simply, you know, who were the people responding to the survey? If you go to the next slide. We were fortunate enough that we had a pretty, at least we would say, representing sample of the community on both sides. We had, you know, 68% of people who were employed full-time, part-time, retirees, home makers, or students. And when you look at the industry or sectors for those that are employed, we had a pretty good sample of people from across different sectors, education, professional services, governing, which includes federal, state, and local, manufacturing, even to construction and western hospitality sectors. Next slide. Going into actually where people are from, 92% of the responses in the survey were from Amah Nogales in Santa Cruz County. So, you see 150 from Nogales Arizona, 128 from Nogales Sonora, and 124 from Rio Rico, Arizona. Next slide, please. Second set of the questions focused really on what are people's interactions with the ports, with the port of entry? And while this study isn't particularly focused on the port of entry, it's trying to understand how do people use the port of entry, helps us inform how we do the planning in the surrounding area. So, next question, please? So, you know, we asked a couple of very basic questions, which, how often use the port of entry? 56% of our respondents said that they were daily or weekly crossers. Next slide, please? But when we also asked, like, hey, have your crossing habits changed over the years? Majority of them responded yes, 66% of them. And as, you know, probably all assume, wait times continue to be a major deterrent for deciding to cross a border in either direction. And if you can see the word cloud on the right side, wait times taking longer, longer when crossing, and some of the responses in Spanish as well, wait times continue to be a deterrent. Next slide, please?
Do you have a question, Bruce?
And wait times in both directions.
Wait times in both directions, that's correct. Another thing which we presume would be the case, a majority of the respondents were personal or pedestrian crossers, and as we'll talk about in the next couple of slides, it has a lot of implications for how we should be planning for facilitating the movement of people and cars. Next slide. We had some specific questions that were tailored to pedestrians, so we asked, if you're a pedestrian, which do you use, Morley Gate, or do you use deconscenium? We used both. If you use both crossings, which would you prefer? Most of the respondents prefer to use deconscenium, but then when they asked, what mode of travel do you use after crossing by foot? Majority, 195% of those respondents said that they still prefer to cross by foot afterwards, followed by being picked up by a family or friend. And this is important, 'cause as we're talking, as we're, GSA is not gonna be concerned with what happens outside of the port. That's gonna be the community's role in helping to put that together. So, we had to think about what kind of pedestrian-friendly environment can create for this pedestrian crossers to continue to cross by foot, but also if, you know, the second most popular response is being picked up by a friend, pick-up drop-off, multimodal alternatives for those people in the vicinity of the port area. Next slide, please? We also asked questions, just as was pointed out earlier, and it's been conversation about electric vehicle adoption. 95% of the respondents still use, you know, traditional gas-powered engines, but the fact that there's not much adoption in the community, or at least in the sample that we have here, gives us an opportunity to really take the time to plan and deploy and even market what charging, a charging network will look like in the Ambles and Nogales region in Nogales and Santa Cruz County, and how we can use that to, for the benefit of residents, tourists, and just visitors passing through. Next slide, please? Next slide was, this question was about the, you know, crossing times, and we'd say it reflects the reality of what most of us have experienced crossing the border. Northbound, afternoon timed, and then southbound, it's... Northbound, afternoon times, and then southbound, it's kind of spread out throughout the day, and I think that's more indicative of the kind of sample that we had. Next slide, please. We had people just asking me what the wait times were. Again, as expected, northbound was 60 minutes or more, while southbound is 30 minutes or less, but also could be determined by what time of day you're crossing. So we can move to the next slide. And I want to spend some time on this one as well. We asked people, are you Central Global Entry participants? Because, you know, that, particularly for northbound travel, that means you can cross the border at a much more expedited timeframe. We're surprised that respondents, only 45% said that they were Century Card or Global Entry holders, while 41% no, 14% said they plan to register. And we believe, going back to the idea of what opportunities there are, there is an opportunity here to, for us to work with stakeholders, the community, the county, and the city, to develop and implement a strategy to promote greater use and adoption of this program, to get people to cross faster, either by foot or by car. And also, it begs the question of what's keeping people from applying in the first place? And I think that would be an opportunity for us to explore that a little bit further. The other question to Chairman Rubin's favorite topic is, Century access, deployment of access lanes in Mexen exiled, so we can deploy a Century Lane in Mariposa as well, so that we're not just relying on deconsigning for Century Lane. So again, this would be a really great opportunity, initiative, that the Port Authority could be working with in conjunction with the community.
Martin, when you look at this, you would say 45% of the people that are crossing, that's not a bad number, but when you compare that to the other ports of communities that have ports of entry, what are those numbers?
Luis, if I recall, in San Luis, you know, CEP has told us, at least based on what their numbers are, 40% of?
The, it's, of the respondents that we had, the sample that we had, 45% had it. Doesn't mean that it's 45% use of the Century. Right now, Nogales, latest information we have is that approximately 20% of the traffic is Century, is participating, is crossing through the Century Lane. In other communities such as in San Luis, upwards of 40% of the traffic is Century. That is, the people who are crossing every day, 40% of that traffic is Century. We think there's a tremendous opportunity to really expand that participation in the Nogales area. The ability to designate more lanes for Century, create dedicated access facilities for Century, will have a tremendous impact in the throughput, both at deconsigning and at Mariposa.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we can move on to the next slide, please. We also asked a couple of questions of what are people's motivations for crossing the border, either northbound or southbound? Based on, just because of the sample and the responses that we had, a lot of the reasons people, the popular reason for crossing northbound into the U.S. was because they live on the side of the border, so they were either working, or taking care of other tasks on the Mexican side, but they were coming, northbound to come back home. The second and third most popular responses were shopping and visiting family and friends. Again, going back to the idea, the close ties in the community on both sides. When we're looking at what reasons were people crossing into Mexico for, there's a lot more, there is a lot about accessing services. So dining, visiting family and friends, and then medical and dental appointments, and shopping as well. So, you know, that also presents an opportunity of what committed to also make sure that people have access to services on this side as well. Next slide, please. And then questions about people's perception, again, very subjective questions, but, you know, coincided with what we have all talked about in recent years. People generally have a neutral, negative experience about deconsigning Morley, partly because of how long it takes to cross the border. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned in a couple of instances, wait times, staffing, and the number of open lanes, shape perceptions people border crossing experience. We actually saw a couple in the open answer responses. One observation that caught our attention is that particularly if you're crossing into the northbound, sometimes some of the primary lanes are closed, and depending on what part of the queue you're on, it makes it difficult for you to readjust and go move into a level of lane, and merge into the open lanes, and creates additional congestion. So perhaps there's an opportunity to work with Nogales Sonora and the Sonora side to implement some kind of intelligent transportation system, so that you can better prepare drivers about queuing in different lanes, if there are certain closures in the primary lanes. Next slide, please. And then the third set of questions, you know, a broad set of what do you want to see in the community? What do you want to see in the community with respect to, if we're going to be, if the federal government's going to be making this multimillion-dollar investment next couple of years, how do we take advantage of that for everyone's benefit? So these set of questions were, I mean, first, starting off with what are people's perceptions in Nogales and Santa Cruz County, on the U.S. side? Overall, there was a positive perception in Nogales, but particularly for the Mexican respondents, they didn't know where Santa Cruz County was. We believe it's, the idea of a county does not exist in Mexico, it's municipalities. So that might be, that kind of surprises that, you know, people, even though in Nogales, it isn't Santa Cruz County, Mexican respondents didn't know where Santa Cruz County was in the first place. So there is an opportunity there to educate and market the county as a whole, and the amenities, and the attractions that it has to offer to Nogales Sonora. Next slide, please. One of the general questions here about what amenities they would like to see offered in Nogales Sonora, dining was the most popular option, followed by shopping. And some of the opening responses to shopping was, people wanted a Costco, people wanted very specific chain restaurants, other type of high-end restaurants or big box stores. But the third most popular response was sports, park recreation, and family activities, so creating an environment that has amenities for all, for all levels and all, you know, and members of the family. So some examples we saw were like bowling lanes, or theater, movie theaters, or, you know, just other, additional types of community spaces. Next slide, please. And then we asked, what challenges do you see in the community? And, you know, a lot of the popular responses are lack of opportunities, so jobs, education, lack of, there's a lack of opportunities for businesses, lack of incentives, lack of vision, and a lack of leadership. And here, going back to the idea of opportunities, I think there's an opportunity here to work with stakeholder partners and other entities in the community to market what is happening in the community, but also work together to form a cohesive vision for the community, and that is partly why we're doing, the EPA is helping us with the downtown revitalization study, to help bring a vision that brings the community together, and clear some goals. Next slide. And then we asked in the other way, what opportunities do you see for growth and economic development in Nogales? So people clearly see that there's opportunities for tourism, for shopping, proximity to the border as an asset for all these, for all these details as well, opportunity for, to promote more job opportunities, and creating opportunities for entrepreneurs and small businesses alike. Next slide. Then the last set of the questions within this section, we wanted to take an opportunity to get more understanding what people's perceptions are about downtown Nogales and the Morley District. And most of, 60% of our respondents said that either they go on special occasions or never go downtown. So it's not really a frequent destination based on at least the respondents that we had. But when we asked people what they wanted to see in downtown in Morley, very clear interest in, you know, bringing more amenities, including cafes, dining, fan entertainment, shopping, and a lot of the opening respondents talked about, you know, what they remember downtown Nogales used to be, you know, very vibrant, bustling area, and very much there's clear interest in making that, in making that a reality again. Another piece which we can talk a bit more about is, we have a lot of responses about parking. In some of the responses earlier, we saw that a lot of people will park their vehicles in the downtown area, cross, you know, take care of their business on the Mexican side to come back. So if all these changes happen, we have to consider what parking is going to look like in the Morley downtown area, and what changes, and how we can better manage parking, parking availability in the downtown area. Next slide. Just a general question about what, how can we make the community welcome for visitors from Mexico and tours? Again, going back to the other ideas of more amenities, stores, better promotion of tourism, visiting opportunities, and public transportation, which we can talk about a bit more later on. Next slide. With this question, we asked a, we asked a question of, would you consider paying a fee to use dedicated lane for faster crossing the port? We're not promoting this idea, it was more of, you know, just a thought experiment, like what would people be willing to do to cross the border in a more expedited fashion? And the fact that 51% of people said that they would consider paying a fee for faster crossing, makes us think that, again, going back to Central Global Entry, we should be pushing that program a lot more, because you are paying to process your Century application, so what can you do to facilitate that process for folks? Next slide. So, you know, next steps, we've already submitted the survey, the raw data, and the summary of this report on our website, submitted to the EPA study team. Something I want to emphasize is that there will be community workshops that are going to be led by the Environmental Protection Agency and their consultant, Robinson's Planning, on October 22nd and 23rd. We actually just received the workshop, the flyers for the workshop today, and we'll be sharing that out to you all and through our channels later today. The survey findings were intended to help shape the discussion and for what particular themes we want to focus on in the community workshops, and it's open to the public. We also, depending on the feedback we receive, we could do other community outreach meetings, but we've also been presenting some of the survey results to the Board of the Port Authority, Chairman Rubin presented to Consejo Empresarial Nogales, the business sector in Nogales Sonora, so they're also aware of our efforts on this side. And as I mentioned, this is the beginning of the process, so if the community, and with your direction, if we need to do follow-up surveys on very particular topics that we addressed in the survey, then let's consider that. You know, one area could be focusing on amenities, yes?
So just the GSA slash EPA consultant for visioning of downtown Nogales, that's who's holding the things on October 22nd and 23rd?
Supervisor Black, that's correct.
And we have a location?
The Nogales Rec Center?
The Jim Rec Center?
The Rec Center.
The Nogales Rec Center, where we did the vaccinations?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, the flyer was just finalized this morning, so we'll be sure to distribute that appropriately to everyone, so that everyone can have. There is an RCP, so don't forget to RCP, just to make sure that we have enough space to accommodate everyone in the community workshops.
And that's open to the public, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And that was our last slide, if there's any questions or any other things you'd like to address, Chairman and Supervisors?
No, I just personally want to thank you for spearheading this effort. It's critical we do this, and I thank you, Luis, and the Port Authority as well. Bruce?
This is, the reconfiguration of the deconsigning port of entry is going to impact this community for the next 80 years. And it's good to, when I say impact our community, the core of this community, Grand Avenue from the border all the way to Mariposa Road. So it is, it's a super important project. And this more recognizing the importance of this project and the need to get the organization and to bring the community together to do this, was the catalyst to engaging with the Port Authority, because they had the capacity to negotiate this. They've seen, they've seen this work happen in San Luis, Arizona, they've seen this work happening in Douglas, Arizona, so it's not new to them. And so congratulations on your study, and we look forward to seeing the next steps.
So, good job, Wizard, Martin. Look, I think it's important that all the data that we have really does help us facilitate and even go after federal funds to address some of the needs that have been identified. And I think that, as was mentioned by the Vice Chairman, what's happened in San Luis and Douglas has been very dramatic, because once that construction begins downtown, it's going to be crazy, and depending on what the footprint is going to be, are they going to knock down buildings, are they going to knock down part of the road down there, how are they going to reconfigure the port to fit in in those parameters? Not just northbound, but southbound lanes, and that's what's choking, southbound right now is you've got two lanes, and there's outbound inspections occurring at the same time. Sometimes they've got a van that's dropping off migrants that have been apprehended to go back to Mexico, so that closes one lane. So many of you have seen this weekend, that traffic was all the way out to the interstate. So, you know, I'm glad you're getting all that information, I hope the community really does participate, because it is going to have a tremendous impact. And the same thing that we have been lobbying forever and ever is you need more customs agents at the ports in order to be able to cut down the wait lines. I was there this weekend, and even with a global entry of the Century, sometimes you have to wait 20 minutes to even go, because I don't know if their equipment is down, or they only have one customs officer processing, and the line keeps building back. So, a lot of important stuff, so thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our study sessions. So move. Do you have a second?
Going into executive session?
No, let's do a regular, regular meeting, and we'll do action item, and then we'll go to executive session.
So we're going to exit?
Go to convenant to regular meeting.
Convenant to regular meeting?
Yes. I need a second, there's a motion.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll go to action items, one, discussion possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement number 240009764-I with the state of Arizona for the Babo Kamari Creek Bridge replacement project in the amount of $3,969.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine thousand dollars. Anything in order there? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve. I will second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will now entertain a motion to recess and convenate to executive session pursuant to ARS.
So move. Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's go meet over there in the tech room.